Madam Clerk.
Counselors Cadine.
Here.
Kamara.
Here.
Deion.
Here.
Kilby.
Here.
Lee.
Here.
Pelletier.
Yeah.
Carrera.
Rapojo.
Here.
And President LaBelle. Here. Person who went to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting, or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. First item is citizens' input. We have several people signed up to speak. Our speaker is Brian Kurt, 118 East Main Street, Fall River, and the subject is proposed compost ordinance. And when you're ready, you have three minutes, Mr. Kurt.
Good evening. When I read the composting ordinance in the Herald recently, I got a problem with it. Now, you define food organic materials that are deposited into the waste stream as harmful to the environment, creating a potential health and safety hazard for residents and for the general welfare of the public, and constitute a public nuisance. That for food waste. It appears that this ordinance is going to define food and organic waste as hazardous waste. Therefore, if that is the case, if a resident doesn't compost, how will they get rid of it? Based on the definition of it, the city council could refuse, the city could refuse to take in and/or reject solid waste that has food organic waste mixed in it. What is the public going to do about it if that's enacted? When I was a boy, and Counsel Pelletier can remember this because he was even older than I, we used to separate our water, our food waste into a separate bucket, and it was picked up by a contractor. And his contractor recycled it. I believe the recycling was defeated to the pigs that he owned. At a certain point in time, the city decided they were going to save money if they combined it. So it got combined, and all those little cylinders that were in everybody's backyard were removed after a while. I don't understand why the city wants to have everybody have a compost bin in their People will not, most people will not do it the right way, and that's one of the things I'm concerned about. They'll draw rats, insects, and probably have a bad smells. Now, again, the city keeps trying to reinvent the wheel. I was watching Channel 5 recently Chronicle, May 3rd. There's a company called Bootstrap Compost, and they're not just in the metro area, in the Boston metro area. They actually have got customers in Attleboro, and that's the closest one to us in Massachusetts. Quite a few places in Providence, North Providence, Pawtucket, Little Central Falls, a whole bunch of municipalities in that area that subscribe to the service. And based on what they showed on the TV program, you had a five gallon bucket, about this big with a cover on it. You put it out, if you subscribe to the service, they take it, they give you an empty one, and you keep doing it. It's kind of like what Mr. Jarabek did back in the day, only we had him in the ground and this guy had to take it out and pour it into a bigger bucket.
Twenty seconds.
Okay.
Motion away the three minute room for an additional three minutes maximum.
Motion away the rules for an additional three minutes made by Counselor Kamara.
Second.
Signed by Counselor Pelletier. All is in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Proceed, Mr. Kurt.
What I would like the city council to consider is to contact Bootstrap Compost, have them come down and give a presentation, because there's nobody in the Fall River area. If a big city like Fall River did it, they might come down here, start doing Somerset, Swansea, Westport, et cetera, and the stuff would be at their facility, it wouldn't be in everybody's backyard. They have a central facility, they bring it there, they do it the right way, and then the customers get some compost back. It's a lot easier than having a whole bunch of these, because the enforcement's going to be a horror show. I mean, and if my neighbor happens to do it wrong, I'm going to get mad at my neighbor? I don't want to get mad at my neighbor. You know, do it simple. The way they did it when we were both, when I were both younger, is to have a contractor do it. It's easier to have a contractor come pick it up, let them compost it the correct way, and then just give it back to us, we'll get all this nice soil, everybody will have nice gardens and stuff. Instead of this thing that's kind of saying that the stuff is hazardous, which I don't understand that part. But I really think you should do it. I mean, I'll be over there. If you want to, if you want to take this information, you can contact them. I got this off the Internet, but I can give whatever I've got here to somebody who wants it, and you can check it out. I really do think you should, rather than pass that ordinance.
You can give it to the clerk, and she'll disseminate it.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
I'll be all set.
Do councilors have questions or comments?
Yeah.
Councilman, seat six, Counsel Pelletier.
I think he's absolutely right. Most of the people now ends up in the garbage. They probably freeze it, hide it in their barrels and everything else. And when we had, at the time it was Jarabek picking them all up, and we had that bucket in the ground, he'd come and grab that bucket and everything else. Now, do these people charge for the service, or?
Well, that, I can't tell it. It doesn't appear that they do, but that would be something that you could find out for sure. It doesn't appear to be, it's just, but we can find out. I would, the other thing I'd say is try it with the businesses first.
Yeah.
Because you ran a couple of businesses. You know you generate a lot of food waste.
Yeah. Well, I think it's a good idea to look at, and let me tell you, I think a lot of people, they don't have them food choppers there in the sink, whatever they call them.
Garbage disposal?
Garbage is well, that's it. Yeah, I don't have one, I'm poor. But, you know, they take it, they'll just throw it in the rubbish, and then if they happen to find the stuff that's illegal, they give them a $300 ticket, and they call one of my colleagues to get rid of the ticket. Do things right, that's all, you know? But that's a good idea, I think we should look into it, and whatever you've got, I'd like to see it. And we can work on it, I think. I yield, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor in seat three, Counsel Vice President, Deion.
Okay, sorry.
No, that's okay. No, it's funny, because listening to you, I remember that. I remember the buckets, the pails in the ground, you're right. So I guess my question would be, why did it stop?
To save money. Because I think Mr. Jarabek had to get paid to pick them up, and the city said, well, let's just put it all in one bucket, and then we don't have to pay Mr. Jarabek, and everything goes to the landfill or to the incinerator. I think at the time, we had the incinerator.
Which we don't have anymore.
Right. But at the time, it was cheaper.
Yep, yep.
I mean, and now everybody's trying to do, have less in the landfill, and to have a professional company do it instead of everybody doing it in their backyard. I mean, if somebody wants to do it, you could probably do an ordinance for the few people who want to do it. But we all had those buckets, and these tenement houses had them. So I mean, you're replacing the bucket in the ground with a bucket this big. I would have brought one.
And you had the lid with the foot thing that you stepped on it and popped it open.
With a lid. Yes, exactly. And then you felt it was hinged, and then you did it and slid the inside bucket. They smelled a little bit, but they were in the ground. The worst was the smell from the truck itself. But these guys, according to Channel 5, they just put them in the back of a pickup truck, and they got a lid on it, and then they just give you an empty one for you to fill up. And I don't know how often they come, but like I said, I got this information off the Internet, I'll give it to the clerk, and he can get the information. Maybe we could be the first one in southeastern Mass. other than Attleboro, first one in Bristol County. Anybody who's this part of Bristol County, they have to start it. We can maybe start something instead of following everybody else.
Isn't it funny how so many things in life come full circle?
Mm-hmm.
And that's pretty much, yeah, I would definitely be interested in seeing that. Thank you very much. With that, I yield.
Thank you. Anything else from the council? Thank you, Mr. Kurt.
Just the information.
Okay, thank you. Next person signed up to speak is Colin Dias, 560 Ray Street, Fall River, and the subject is lack of transparency for Mayor Coogan and recall election. You have three minutes, Mr. Dias.
Thank you, and thank you, Council President and members of the city council. First of all, I think over these last few weeks, we've seen more shady actions from this administration and from its mayor. At the last school committee meeting, the mayor and others voted not to fund Durfee fields. And if you listen to the meeting, and if you listen to Ken Pacheco speak, it's a possibility that Durfee contact sports may not be able to practice or play on these fields next fall. And School Committee Van Aguiar, and I'm glad he's here today, wanted to use these one-time monies that are in the school department on the school side to pay for these fields. And the mayor and other school committee members shot that down. I think the mayor's using his influence to pressure some of these school committee members, just my opinion. And the mayor wants to move school, these same school department one-time monies to the city. And this mayor just lied to the community. He said the city was flushed. City was flushed with funds, we have so much money, but that was a lie. He misrepresented the state of finances in our city. I think he's deceptive, and I think he lied. It's shady. And now, speaking about that, I hope the city does not accept any one-time monies from the school department if the mayor said the city's flushed. And another issue now that's come up is the administration, in my opinion, is engaged in a cover-up with the John Perry report. Why won't his administration release the report? I know we will hear bogus defenses of personnel matters, however, when it comes to the misuse of city funds, which the mayor knows plenty about, the public has every right to know how their tax dollars were misused. I think he crossed the red line in being disengaged in a cover-up. What was his involvement? What was the mayor's involvement in Mr. Perry's actions? Why can't we see the report so the public can have full trust and full transparency that nothing happened? And it's not just me, I know I'm here today, and I know many residents in the city are fed up with this mayor, his war on the taxpayers, his lie about the state of our city's finances, his misuse of city funds.
Twenty seconds.
And we don't believe he should remain in office for another six months. And I do have an announcement for the city. I do have 10 city residents and registered voters, and next week, and let the mayor be put on notice, we'll have a meeting, and we'll start the process to recall Paul Coogan from office.
That's three minutes, Mr. Dias, thank you.
Thank you.
Next person signed up to speak is Kevin Aguirre, 2 Crestwood Street, and the subject is school department bonding.
Good evening, councilors.
Good evening.
Thank you for having me. So when we had the joint meeting here, we talked about some issues, and I feel like we don't get enough chance to throw things on the table so you all can get an understanding of where we're at and what's happening on the school side. So I'm here as a citizen of Fall River on my own, not as representing the school committee or the superintendent or anyone. So I just wanted to bring some issues to the forefront. I think if anyone is paying attention to the school issues, you know, I'm real passionate about finishing the fields at Durfee High. And I still am concerned with how we could even be at this point, where we spent $260 million, and the money wasn't allotted within that for the fields. But that's a fact, that's going to be, that's what it is. What's before us, though, is how are we going to proceed with the rest of the fields to finish them? So I've been working with the administration in the school department, I've sat in meetings talking about the athletic fields, the turf fields that need to be overturned. As you know, I was here before you to advocate for some bonding at one point for those fields, for the baseball field. Since that time, we still have around $7.5 million of additional fields in order to complete that Durfee project. That was brought up at the last meeting, I was passionate about us not shifting any funds over to the city for that reason, because we still have outstanding payments that need to be made and things that need to be purchased. So when we look at it to say, how are we going to do this? I sit as a citizen, and I see where you're facing. You're facing the bill, and the taxpayers are facing the bill for the Durfee High School. The council voted to fund the Diamond Project out of the school budget, out of the city budget. If I'm sitting where I'm sitting as a citizen and watching the decisions that you have to make and this administration has to make, I can't in good conscience look at any of you and say, let's go to the city council to see if we can bond for that other $5 million to finish the fields, or anything like that. I can't in good conscience do that to any of you or the citizens of Fall River. The two big projects that you have to fund in your bonding is Durfee High and the Diamond Project. So I'm here before you today to ask that you consider working with the administration, maybe calling the administration down or the school department down, because it's not something that I can do as one member. What my proposal would be is that we, as a school department, have some ability, work out a mechanism within the city, so that if we had ability to bond for those projects, and we pay the bill out of the school budget, our one-time funds, our extra funds can't be used for that, but in school department funds. So we're not here before you asking for $3 million for this, another $2 million for that.
Twenty seconds.
I believe that we should get to the point.
Motion away the rules.
Second. Motion away the rules made by Counselor Cadine.
For an additional three minutes, not beyond that.
Is that fine, Counselor?
Thank you.
Thank you. So my proposal would be to have us sit down together and work out an agreement with the city, so that we could, we can't bond as a school, but if you authorized us to bond and have us pay the bill, we could complete this project in the next year or two on the school department's dime, not the taxpayers, and not the city council, and not the administration on the sixth floor. That we could do this within our budget. Now, I've suggested this to the people in the school department, I've asked them to go to the city administration and the mayor to talk about this. To this date, I think it's falling on deaf ears, but I think it's time, as we're preparing for the budget in June, let's sit down together and let's work out an agreement. If anybody watches the school committee meetings, I've advocated for opening the indirect cost agreement between the city and the schools. Open that up, so we can do some things like that. Once again, that's fallen on deaf ears, that it doesn't want to be changed in any way. And my last point to the council is that within that agreement that is currently in place, any purchases of capital of $150,000 or more were supposed to be borne by the mayor and the city council on the city side. The school department over the last several years have chosen to fund a lot of projects that are over $150,000 to the tune of $3-plus million on the school department's dime. So I'm asking for you to consider in the future, however your rules are about getting some people to the table to discuss this, so that we can figure out if it's possible, which I do think it is possible, that we would pay the bill, but we can proceed with the projects. We currently have $2.5 million in the bank right now from the one-time funds that the school department voted at the last meeting. So if we need $7.5 million or thereabouts, we have $2.5 in the pot, just like any of us would do with our houses. We have that money. Let's, if you give us some authority to bond in the appropriate way with the proper documentation, we can get the turf fields redone, and we can get all those fields done to make that, you know, the best-looking school and the best-looking fields in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Aguirre. Counselor in seat four, Counsel Kilby.
Yes, thanks for being here. And thanks for your advocacy, because I know how passionate you are about that issue, as I am, Counsel Kamara as well. We're going to finish off that school the right way. So my first question is, and I usually don't engage in citizens' input, but you're an important person, Kevin. So when was that action taken by the school committee? Because I remember a vote that we took, and you supported it at our joint meeting. Well, refresh my memory. At the last school committee meeting, why was that action taken to revoke the plan for the fields? You mean the baseball field, you mean the softball field, right?
Yes, it wasn't revoked, Counselor. So what happened is it was never in the plans. So it was never in the plans for Durfee High School. So if you look at those nice shiny pictures of the whole grounds at the Durfee High School, when we went to the voters and we talked about spending $260 million to fix it, if you look at all those shiny pictures, there's some dulled-out parts, and that's all the stuff that wasn't part of the project. So that means the baseball field, which is why you had to help us, which is why there isn't going to, there wasn't going to be a second baseball field. So we used to have two, we should have two back, it's only fair. In order to make it equal, there was no softball field, similar to what the boys have. So we've been working behind the scenes to try to come up with a plan for what it would look like. School department paid, I think, $100,000 for a landscape architect to figure out the best way, but all with no funding attached to it. So that's why I'm advocating, and I advocated for the school folks to say the same thing. There's no money for that.
How was that vote taken at your meeting? I mean, what?
What do you mean? At the last meeting?
Yes.
So at the last meeting?
How was that action taken?
So at the last meeting, we had an ability for $2.2 million, the $1.4 that you recently gave based on the city, and another $800,000. So we had $2.2 or $2.4 million that the school committee unanimously decided to put towards the fields. So we have that now in the bank. We have the $2.4 million that the council bonded for, for the baseball field.
Point of order. We've gone beyond an additional three minutes, I believe, and...
That was his, he got to speak for an additional three minutes. Counselor in seat four is asking a question.
I don't think we should, we should begin to this. If we're going to make a recommendation, refer to a committee, that's fine.
I won't prolong it, but I'll be fine on a resolution.
I think you're fine to ask a question.
I'll be fine on a resolution. Counselor Krieger wants to co-sponsor it at the next meeting.
So to answer your question, so we had the $2.4, so we voted for the $2.4. We were advocating for additional funds, so we have a vote of $1.3 million that was on the table. The mayor tried to get us to take that fund, those funds, and move that towards, on the city side, to pay for transportation. Knowing what I just suggested, I was advocating, no, that $1.3 should be added to the pot of money for the fields, rather than go to the city side. My motion failed, but the motion to table it at the school level passed, so that money didn't come back to the city. Couple of councilors were, school committee members, thought that what they were told, that there was money for the fields. And when they realized that it wasn't, it was like, whoa, wait a minute, I wasn't told the truth here, we table it for next meeting. So that money's going to come to the school committee again, but it still will only give us half of the money, let's say. What I'm suggesting is, in a budget cycle, let's talk about a way that we can wrap this whole thing up, so that we do it very strategically, when the children are playing, what seasons, and then we know we have the money, and then we can make this come to fruition.
Okay, I'll stop there. I'm not going to elaborate on the value, in my opinion, of these projects, and what it means to our children, and so on and so forth. So I'll yield there, and I'll follow up with, I'm sure, some of my other colleagues here, and hopefully get a dialogue going. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor in seat three, Counsel Vice President, Deion.
Thank you. So my only comment is, originally, the athletic complex was a $10 million project. This council gave bond authorization for $2.4 million for the baseball field. The school committee has authorized $2.4 million to be added to that number, and there was approximately $500,000 left from the Durfee project that could have also been applied towards those fields, which would bring you to just a little over the half, the $5 million mark, which would leave you at $5 million to finish funding the complex. Do you agree with that?
Yeah, the $500,000 is assuming that nothing else happens with the rest of the project, like ledge, or, so they have it on the side, but if they, as they're digging and they're finishing things up, if they get ledge or some other unexpected, that won't be there. So it's sort of like shaky money, but yes, it's around $5 million.
Yeah, so essentially, right about the half-point mark. So my one question is, how would it affect your budget if you, so if it was left that the school budget would fund the additional $5 million, does that inflate the budget at all? Are, do you believe there are funds in there to be able to do it? How does it affect the budget, and how would it affect the city side?
Speaking for myself as one member of the committee, we can have that bond available.
Point of order, I'm sorry.
Counselor.
It's just, he's not a member of the community here right now. He said he's a member of the community, and I have a lot of respect for Kevin, and what he wants to do, I get it, this is not the forum for it.
Okay.
We're asking questions now as a school committee member. He's in here on the citizens' input, as a citizen of Fall River, which he is and has every right to do it, and that's why I said we should refer to this to a committee. So it's not just one representative of the community that's talking partially as a school committee member, at the same time as a citizen. So let's find out what we're doing here. We're going to talk to the school committee members, or one school committee member who comes down as a citizen, but yet we're going to ask them school committee questions. It's just, let's just refer to a committee and get everyone else involved, and let's ask these questions there. We can be here all night. That's why I said refer for an additional three minutes, so that this meeting doesn't get hijacked by anybody else who wants to come down and do this. Let's take care of the issue.
Counselor, I appreciate your...
If there's an issue with the fields, let's take care of it.
I appreciate your point of order.
But this is not the place for it. Thank you.
Mr. Aguirre was given an additional three minutes for him to speak. Councilors have questions?
I did.
I do agree with you, he is here, he did say as a resident, we should keep the questions to that. If a council would like to put in a resolution.
Let me answer the question as a citizen.
Thank you.
Yes, as a citizen, Kevin Aguirre, that I'm telling you right now, that if we bonded for $5 million, the school department can pay that out of our budget and not come to the city council or the mayor asking for any additional funds. 100%, absolutely.
Okay, and that was my question. As a citizen making a statement, he made a statement, I wanted verification of his statement, plain and simple. Thank you very much. With that, I yield.
And the city's giving us, the city always gives us just the minimum anyway. So they're not giving us one red cent above 100%. Within that, we can do a lot of things.
Counsel Kilby, you going to be putting in a resolution after the agenda?
Yes, yeah.
Thank you. Anything further, Counselor in seat one?
Yes, a question. So the, you know, budget hearings are coming up, so I think it'd be an appropriate time to address it.
They are on our first meeting, Counselor, thank you. Counselor in seat one?
So I don't, I don't have a question for Mr. Aguirre, but I do, just in terms of the resolution that's going to be filed, so I believe that's going to address the issue for bonding. Can we just be sure that when we're scheduled for the budget discussions, that the indirect cost agreements are included in that, so if we can give just everybody the proper notice so the city administration, the school administration, just to be prepared to answer where we stand with indirect cost agreements, and if there have been any updates on that?
Madam Clerk, can we send a communication?
Yes.
Thank you.
And then, on top of that, if, because I think Mr. Aguirre brought up several good points, so if we could also just do a quick discussion, because I know this is budget purposes, but part of the budget, I'd like to know if there is any, because I know Mr. Aguirre is in favor of this, but I guess establishing a stabilization account that would be very specific to the school department, and then we can talk about the funding mechanism for that stabilization account.
You want to speak about that on their budget evening?
Mm-hmm. Should be a quick, quick discussion, just figure out if everybody's in favor of it, and then obviously, we'd have to go through the process of establishing a stabilization account for the school department for capital items.
Okay, do you want that as part of the resolution?
No, just budget discussion.
Okay.
I just want to make sure that it's all-encompassing, because it does tie into the budget, so I just don't want to be focused on the operational budget, just the totality of the budget for the school department.
Thank you, all. Have a great night.
Do you yield, Counselor?
Thank you.
Anything further? Thank you, Mr. Aguirre. Next person signed up to speak is Vanessa Almeida, 1227 Dwelly Street, and the subject is noise ordinance.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm not going to be in here today, but I wanted to talk about a problem that's presented at our household. There's a car wash there on the side of our house on Dwelly Street. I'm pretty sure everybody's familiar with the place. I am an elderly, disabled person, and within feet, from this gentleman to me, not even that close, I mean, closer than this, there's a vacuum that people, vacuum their cars, they go there to wash their cars, and I don't really have a problem so much with the playing of the music, it's the boom. I can't even be in my own bed, and it's bouncing off my chest, making me ill. So I know you can make noise during certain parts of the day, but when I was growing up in the city, and as far as I know, still in the state of Massachusetts, there's a decimal ordinance. So those booms are more than the loud noise. And the guy that owns the car wash, he's making his little coin on my illness, on my back. And the guy that owns the car wash, he's making his little coin on my illness, on my back, and all my other neighbors. But everybody's afraid to come and say anything about this guy. Well, he's destroying and ruining my life, because everybody who's there plays their music. There's a sign, smaller than a stop sign, and it's on the side of the building, not even on the front of the building. And the people congregate there, and I'm tired of calling the police every day. Our police officers have much more to deal with than they come by when the people aren't even there, because by the time they get to that call, it's, it, it's, there's nothing going on. I don't have a problem with anybody trying to make a living. The gentleman has a right to have a business there, but he needs to be, either have some kind of, um, security there to police the fact that these people are not paying attention to how they, um, play their music. Or he needs to move that one vacuum from the distance of my house, and I have pictures with me if anybody wants to see them. Because, as, in my opinion, it's far too close. You know, it's an open area, everybody else's houses in the area is not as close as my, particularly my bedroom. And it's just a real nuisance, and it's impacting my health. And I'm already recovering from cancer, I don't need any more stress in my life. Would you like to see the pictures? Anyone?
You can show it.
Send a via email or-
I'm sorry.
Do you have them in person? Is it Mr. Ruta or Ms. Almeida?
I'm sorry.
Is it Mr. Ruta or Ms. Almeida? I'm sorry, I can't read your handwriting. Thank you. What is the address of the business?
Um, the address of the business, I have to look at, and I apologize, I didn't bring my glasses.
Still a question from the bank, everyone.
I know I took a picture of it. His signs are so small.
Counselor in seat six, do you have a-
Yeah, I'd like to know if that, is it at night?
No, it's, well, it's all day. It starts at eight o'clock in the morning, and it goes to nine o'clock at night. All day, every day, and it's gonna be a long summer. So it's constant, it's constant. Like, there was these four cars there today, they're all souped up vehicles, um, and they're just playing, it's not even playing the music, it's the boombox. It's, it's an industrial speaker that belongs in a nightclub. And it reverberates over the whole house, my walls are shaking, the, the windows shake, my chest shakes. Uh, it's, I can't even hear my own TV. I mean, I'm on the phone with somebody, and my friends will say, who, who's that? Who's playing that in your house? Oh, it's not my house, it's at the car wash. I mean, it's beyond ridiculous.
So he doesn't wanna cooperate with you?
Um, well, I, I brought it up to my landlords, and they said that they've called for years and years and years, and they, there's, the guy does nothing. You know, and they keep saying, just call the police. Now, I've called the police, I feel bad about calling them, because to me, it's not really a police, um, it's not a, a police matter. It's an ordinance matter, like, that guy's got a business there, but it's a neighborhood. We live in that neighborhood. I pay taxes, I pay my rent, I'm a law by citizen, and I have to deal with people.
Well, one thing we can do is notify the chief to go by there, to get the loud music, give him a ticket. I mean, they, well, you know, we got a new guy there, and they, they know what the problem is, we'll tell them what the problem is, and let them go by. If they hear the loud music, stop and give them a ticket, and it started, maybe that will help. And, uh, you know, that's one thing we could do. And, you know, i- if it runs after nine o'clock at night, I don't think that place should be running all night, myself.
Well, it's open 24 hours.
24 hours, well.
So they can come in, they don't really make noise at night, I will say that. It's not going on at night, and it's not, like I said, it's not so much the music, um, it's the bass. It's the bass, and that one, um, vacuum area. It's so close to my windows, and that's what I wanted to show you.
Madam Clerk, you think if we could send a letter out to the chief of police, ask them to, uh, look at the problem there? If they go by, they hear it, stop and give them a ticket, and we can stop from there and let's see what happens.
So this is the one vacuum, right here. And that's my bedroom window, you see how close it is? And they park right there.
I believe it, there's no problem there.
Uh, it's, I mean, it's-
Yeah.
If, if, if I went to this gentleman's house that owned this property, and I sat there with my music on, or I, I don't even own one of those bass things, and I did that, I'm pretty sure he'd call the, he wouldn't tolerate it every day. I don't think anybody here would.
I will go nonchalant myself and talk to the guy, but we get the police chief probably to go down there. I will sit down with the police chief myself, let him know what the problem is. I'm sure some of my colleagues will back me up to see if we can get the situation straightened out for you.
I appreciate that, Mr. Aguirre. Thank you, folks, have a good night.
Thank you, Counselor. Thank you, Ms. Ruta. We have one other citizen's input, Madam Clerk, submitted.
Madam President and members of the city council, I would like to address a couple of issues that I consider important. I would like to firstly address the appointment of Ryan Lyons as Elections Commissioner. In discussions with several past Elections Commission Chair people, it is common opinion that Mr. Lyons is allegedly not a good fit for the position of Elections Commission Chair. Their opinion, as is my own, that Mr. Lyons allegedly does not have the personality or temperament to be a proper fit for the position. There is also a fact that Mr. Lyons worked intimately with several political campaigns, including local, state, and federal elections. Mr. Lyons has served on the campaigns for two city councilors who should recuse themselves from any vote on the issue of this appointment. Most recently, a political candidate who was opposition to a sitting state representative had issues with Fall River Elections Office, and I made a suggestion that the candidate file a complaint with the Secretary of State, Division of Elections, and to the best of my knowledge, such a complaint was filed by the candidate. I know that I personally filed a request for an opinion from the corporate council, from the Secretary of State's Division of Elections regarding the recent handling of nomination papers. Mr. Lyons should have recused himself from the handling of nomination papers, as the candidate's opponent has had Mr. Lyons work on his campaign. It is apparent that with Mr. Lyons' past practice of working on any number of political candidates and campaigns, his ability as an election commissioner may be impeded by the fact that he may have to recuse himself from the handling of an election and nomination process. Further, the position of Election Commissioner is a vital position in the election, electoral process, and any inference of impropriety may be avoided, as we have seen recently in the presidential election. Complaints will be generated if Mr. Lyons does not recuse himself from the handling of the election if he has ever had a position in a candidate's campaign. The Elections Commissioner must be neutral and must only represent the law and people and not his political allies. I know I personally will have no faith in our election process if Mr. Lyons did not recuse himself from the election vote or certification, especially when a candidate has had Mr. Lyons as part of their campaign. Another issue, although minor, were the two political parties in the city approached and were, were the two political parties in the city approached in their support or rejection of the appointment. While this may not have been a past practice, it is a practice that would maintain the confidence in the election process. Lastly, the issue of water bills has come before this council annually, and right now, I would like to address the needs of low-income residents. The quarterly billing process of the water department can become burdensome on the people on fixed income or low income. I would like to once again suggest that the city council look into the possibility of doing monthly billings of the water and sewer accounts. It is not unheard of for community utilities to be billed monthly, as it provides a monthly income stream for the community utilities and allows for proper budgeting for the community that is manageable. Some bills as high as $500 and higher are not easily handled by many people, especially property owners that have apartments, as they may not be charging exorbitantly high rents in order to keep people in their properties. I do understand that monthly billings will have a slight increase in costs to the city, but the offset may be fewer delinquent bills and a monthly income stream. More importantly, it will alleviate some stress on the property owners. Thank you for your consideration in these matters, C.J. Ferry.
Anything further, Madam Clerk?
No, Madam President.
Next item on the agenda is a resolution, the Committee on Finance to convene to discuss allowable use of Bristol County ARPA funds that Fall River will be receiving. This was adopted May 10th, 2022. We have members of the administration come down. Resolution which was filed by myself and Council Vice President, whereas the City of Fall River will be receiving 16 million dollars in Bristol County ARPA funds, and whereas the spending of these funds requires signatures of five members of the Fall River City Council, now therefore be it resolved that each member of the city council review the ARPA funds allowable uses and be prepared to make recommendations to the administration on how these funds are spent. And be it further resolved that the city administrator and the director of financial services be invited to attend the Committee on Finance meeting scheduled for Tuesday, May 24th, to discuss and provide guidance on the council's recommendations in order to ensure the final decision on the use of these funds is reached in cooperation with the administration and in the best interest of the residents, businesses, and the City of Fall River. Attorney Aiken?
Good evening. Uh, it's good to be here, uh, this evening. As you could see, there were several exhibits included in the packet for this evening, for this conversation. One of them is a 44-page summary of the final rule for ARPA distribution. As you probably know, since its inception, ARPA has gone through a number of different revisions and changes. As of April 1st, 2022, what is being referred to as the final rule is in effect. The final rule is 437 pages long, which is why the summary of the rule is 44 pages. I've included that because as you consider ways that this council would recommend using county, um, ARPA funds, that particular summary is very helpful in, in figuring out how the rules have been shaped over time and sort of what the final position of the Department of Treasury is on that. I also included for your review, some proposals that have full documentation behind them from different departments in the city, as well as some other proposals that would require some additional research and information. As is indicated on the bottom of that sheet, that's entitled Snapshot, Proposed Fall River Expenditures. The administration is glad to assist in preparing any full proposals that this council might be interested in sending to the county. As you know, there's just about a little over 16 million dollars in county money. Commitment of those funds requires five signatures of councilors, so a simple majority of this body. And the intent of the mayor is to ask the council to, obviously within the boundaries of the, of the allowable uses, use that money how they see fit. And so with your five signatures and with whatever help the administration can offer in crafting proposals, hopefully, we can really use that money to do some, some important things here in the city. And then finally, there is, my list of ARPA eligible uses by category. It's important to identify what category and subcategory an eligible use might be when we're proposing it. And I can certainly help, I've read the final rule and read the summary, and, and I have a pretty good working knowledge, at least for now, until they change it again, of how these things might fall into the different categories. And then I've also provided a list of all the already committed ARPA funds through the city ARPA money, which is that 70 million done in two allotments of approximately 34, 8, 35 million dollars. So with that, I would be glad to take your questions and, and engage in whatever conversation you see fit about these funds.
Thank you. Counselor in seat three, Council Vice President Deon?
Good evening, thank you. Okay, I have a few questions, actually. So in terms of the police department, I want to start out by saying I have no issue with how funds have been allocated and spent in regards to the police department, that I, there's no issue at all. I am dismayed that there have never been any funds allocated for the fire department, but I guess we are where we are.
Would you like me to speak to that?
Sure, I would like you to, please.
Sure. So I submitted only our ARPA commitments. The thing that's important to note is that through the CDA, we are purchasing a ladder truck as well as an engine, which is about two and a half, 2.6 million dollars. And there's also a commitment to purchase turnout gear. So what we're trying to do is, I mean, I suppose somebody could take issue with, with which pocket it's coming out of. But with regard to the CDA, they know, Mr. Deon knows that, that he can utilize some of his funds to purchase fire trucks for the fire department, those are huge expenditures. But that'll significantly upgrade and improve the fleet that we have, which is already a very good fleet, but it does need some, some upgrading. The reason why what you see here is police expenditures without any fire is because of that. Because if you look at the amount of money that's already been committed to fire through CDA, we're essentially looking at a similar amount of money for police, so it's an equal thing. This is not leaving fire out for any reason.
Do you, do you have a timeline on that, on when they might be able to expect these vehicles and turnout gear?
So I know that the, the vehicles, um-
They generally take about eight months to a year to, to, to build, I understand that.
Exactly, and so I believe it was maybe two months ago, um, maybe 10 weeks at the, at the outside, that these vehicles, that they settled upon what they wanted. I'm not sure necessarily how long it takes for the order to go in and that sort of thing. But I know that that was actively in process about 10 weeks ago.
Okay, good, that's great, thank you, appreciate that.
Excuse me one second, Counselor. Attorney Aiken, could you just clarify? I did reach out to the fire department when I was reading through the administration's snapshot of proposals, and there, I didn't see anything from fire on here. And I was told that the fire department had submitted a list to the original ARPA committee, which had 48 items on it, and it was not prior, it wasn't in any type of a priority order. Do you have that? I did ask them to send it to me, but I do not have it.
So I don't have that with me, I apologize, I, I didn't know you were looking for it, Madam President, and I can get that to the council. Those are proposals that have recently been received, have not been acted on or reviewed in any significant way for the city ARPA committee. And the reason they are not included in any of the documents that I submitted tonight is that we just haven't done the due diligence, and as far as I'm concerned, they don't have, they're not fully documented proposals. It's a list of proposals, I'd like to see priorities for the fire department of what it is they're looking for. And because everything else is through CDA, it wouldn't be included in this.
Would you ask the fire department to prioritize that list that you received?
I have.
Okay, thank you.
Now, in terms of the monies that have been allocated for crime prevention, training, and equipment, it's, it's in two, on two separate line items. One is 275,000, one is 287,000. One in parentheses is police cars, might, does that indicate that the initial 275 was to purchase strictly police vehicles? And then the second line item was for the prevention training and training?
So the first line item, it was an early ARPA purchase of police cars. And so I believe, was that five cruisers?
I think that's what they said, five.
And so that was, there's a certain number of cruisers that they, they try to purchase every year. And this was a way to offset that normal line item in the budget. We purchased five police cars, we're talking about how to basically flesh out the rest of the, um, the purchasing that they might need to do around police cars, motorcycles, and other vehicles. With regard to the 287, um, the crime prevention training and equipment, I'm not exactly, so there, there's a number of things that, that we've done with the police that have been out of necessity. So you see from the proposed Fall River expenditures, the, the sheet that isn't, that hasn't been acted on yet, the 911 communication system. That was something that wasn't really anticipated as, as what they would have liked to have spent ARPA on, but they got notice that the software company is no longer supporting the software. This is 911 soft, uh, computer system that supports EMS, fire, and police. So it just had to be done, otherwise our 911 system would become obsolete. So there's kind of a combination of things that were planned, you know, that might otherwise be capital expenses, and things that were huge expenses that, that were a little bit unexpected and needed to be acted on.
So it's safe to say that we don't, right now, this second, explicitly know what the 287 actually purchased?
I can, I can-
Because I get that the 911 is above and beyond, but it's not part of that number.
That's, that is true.
And I'm absolutely not against it, obviously. I mean, that's, that's an important thing. If you can't call 911 and get help, we're in trouble.
That's a true statement.
So, um, I don't have issue with that, I was just curious as to what the allocation did pay for, especially moving forward, if we're gonna be asked for other things, well, what did we spend the money on already?
I can get that information-
In terms of the police cruisers?
Yep.
Yes. Generally, that would be in the capital proj- Generally, that would be in the capital projects. I believe we started either last budget cycle or the one before to start putting cruisers into the capital projects every year so that we could maintain our fleet of vehicles and keep upgrading. So this year, projects were taken out of the budget, so I guess the ARPA funding compensated for the fact that that was pulled from the budget. Is that an accurate statement?
Not completely.
Sort of.
So as you probably all know and have seen at this point, the budget, you know, was submitted several weeks ago, and that budget did not reflect any capital projects. Those were pulled out in order to deliver a balanced budget. We are talking right now, similar to what I just referenced with our fire, trying to figure out what the priorities are for each of those departments, given anything that's already been acted on with ARPA, and any conditions that might have changed for different departments, including, you know, fire, police, but also the smaller departments and DCM, and getting them to prioritize for us so we can actually go back and say, okay, you know, what is eligible for ARPA expenditure? And what do we want to do with, whether it's city ARPA money or asking the council to do through county ARPA money?
Okay. Now, on the Bristol County ARPA funds page, body worn cameras. If memory serves me correctly, and it wasn't so long ago, only a couple of weeks ago, I believe we had an ARPA meeting with the original allocation of funding where this subject was discussed, and it was basically unanimously voted that the original ARPA funds, not the Bristol County funds, would be utilized to pay for this. So why now would it be under the Bristol County if the ARPA committee had already basically committed by vote to paying for this?
So it was actually just the tasers? So as you recall, the tasers...
We did discuss the maintenance and storage at that meeting.
We did, but it actually came up outside of the proposal. So the proposal was, I think, almost $400,000 for tasers. And the reason that was important is that the age of the tasers that the police department has now are not compatible with body worn cameras.
Correct.
The idea, and I know you know this, but I'm going to say it for the rest of the council, the idea is that there are basically three ways we want a body worn camera to be activated. Either manually, where a police officer gets out of his or her vehicle, engages with a member of the public, and activates the camera to make sure that that interaction is recorded. Otherwise, there are emergent circumstances where an officer may not have the time, but because of the emergency aspect, they're either drawing their weapon or they're drawing their taser. We want both of those tools to work with the taser in order to activate the body worn, I'm sorry, work with the camera in order to activate the body worn camera upon draw. The tasers right now are too old for that to work, so what we were looking to do is upgrade the tasers in order for them to be compatible with body worn cameras. Now, what happened in the meeting is that somebody brought up, well, you know, costs of body worn cameras, does that include storage, does that include equipment? And what emerged from that was this idea of, well, what if we looked for ARPA money to do both the tasers and the cameras as all single, you know, one single expenditure? So the proposed $1.522 million is, it's actually really 1.73 because there's a $200,000 grant that we would be able to get to pay for a portion of this. The balance of it is really like $1.1 or $2 million for the cameras, which includes five years of maintenance as well as storage of all the information. And then finally, an upgrade for the entire force of, well, for the majority of the force for tasers. Because what you don't want to have to do is have people sharing equipment, because what you want is you want the footage from the camera to be linked to that single officer who's using that single taser and that single weapon. That way, there's no question as to who is behind the camera when that footage is needed for any purpose, whether it's to protect the officer or to protect a resident. And I think it can certainly go both ways, you know, given the situation. So the $1.522, it's just a proposal that if the city council is not interested in funding that through county ARPA money, I think that that would certainly be the proposal that would go to the city as essentially a revision of the first proposal, which was just for tasers. So that's why it's here, because it's essentially a revision of the original proposal.
Yeah, because I do recall that there was an individual, and this isn't quite verbatim, but I think I'm going to be close. There was an individual who stated, you know, this is a one-time expense with one-time monies. Why wouldn't we just consider paying for the whole ball of wax? Why don't we table it, send it back to the police department, identify the dollar number, and then approve to pay for the entire thing? Which the funds are there, I don't think. I mean, I personally, because of knowing about, you know, that whole conversation, that the entire committee was on board with that, thought it was a good idea to do that, and so do I. I think they need the equipment. But I don't, my part, I can't support taking it out of the Bristol County funding when I know the conversation already existed and the funds are there to take it out of the original ARPA funding.
Okay.
I guess that's just my point, and it's just me personally, my stance.
Yeah. It feels, with respect, kind of like a distinction without a difference, but I know that this council was very interested in body cams.
Mm-hmm.
I know that there's a resolution about body cameras, so, you know, I basically took the initiative to put this on as a way to possibly do this because we hadn't committed the money yet, knowing that the proposal for tasers was going to evolve into a proposal for the entire thing. But, you know, whatever this, I mean, like I said, the mayor is committed to this council directing that $16 million in the best way it sees fit. I think this is a very, very worthwhile way for that money to be spent, but if the council wants to go in a different direction, we can certainly do it through city ARPA money.
Yeah. I mean, I see, in my estimations, monies that were spent that, I don't know, I won't get into that side of my opinion, but I just think the money was there, the committee was on board with paying for all of it, that we can do something else worthwhile with $1.5 million out of the Bristol County funds. Again, only my opinion, I'm only one vote.
It's all going to benefit the city, so it almost doesn't matter what pocket it comes out of, but I understand.
At the bottom of the list is $140,000 allocation to River to Recovery. I was a little bit, again, surprised to see that on the list only because that was a request that was tabled. We were waiting for additional information. It was tabled and supposed to come back to the committee with the specifics that the committee was looking for. So I found it interesting that it's considered to be allocated when it didn't come back to the committee.
So I do remember when the gentleman from River to Recovery came back a second time, and I don't know whether, because I actually had to step out of the meeting. I don't remember if the full complement of members were at the meeting, if it was possible that you were not there for some reason.
No, I was there. It was tabled. You did leave.
But the second time, when he came back. Do you remember that?
Hmm, I...
All right. I'll get clarification.
Yeah, that'd be good.
But I'm certain that...
I think there was only one meeting since then, and I was at that meeting. But whatever, yeah, if we get clarification on that, and again, it's only $140,000, but for the sake of argument, let's assume they decided it just didn't meet the criteria or what they were looking for. Again, there's another $140,000 that can be applied towards something, I guess is my point with that one. All right, now I'm going to jump to street sweepers. I have three questions.
Sure.
The first, how many employees do we have that can actually be dedicated to street sweeping? How many licensed operators do we have? And where are we going to store almost a million dollars worth of equipment that's going to get ruined along with the rest of the vehicles that everybody complains about that sit out in the weather?
So I'll take the questions in order. The first one is it depends on the street sweeper. So there are two kinds of street sweepers here. One is a vacuum sweeper, the other's a brush sweeper. The vacuum sweepers are actually really essential, especially for the water department, but also for streets and highways, because they're able to essentially go below grade and suck out, you know, catch basins and anything that isn't just a flat surface. So you're able to go in and clean out a lot of the things that you, this council has seen hundreds of times where, you know, we've had claims come to the council because people say, oh, you know, my area was flooded. And if you look into the claim, you find out that they claim that there was a clogged, you know, grade or drainage piece. These vacuum sweepers are able to clean that stuff out, they're able to clean out catch basins, they're able to clean out a lot of the water-based infrastructure, and so it's essential in that way.
So, excuse me, I don't want to interrupt you, but if I don't ask, I might forget. So if that's the case, who would be in possession of that particular street sweeper if it's more geared towards the water department?
Well, it's not more geared, it just happens to be, you know, really the one that they would need more than anything. So currently, we have three street sweepers that are in the possession of the city, already purchased. Two vacuums and one brush. And one of the vacuums is old and on its way out. So effectively, in terms of dependable street sweepers, we have one of each. Water department needs one on its own, a vacuum, and then we'd be looking for also brushes. You had asked who is able to operate them. The thing about the brush ones is that it doesn't require a commercial driver's license with air brake or any of the additional pieces, whereas the vacuums do. So we have a number of personnel within DCM as well as water that if they were to operate a brush, it wouldn't be a problem. We have a more limited number of personnel within DCM and water that would operate the vacuum, but we have personnel that could do it and that already do do it. And so a CDL is, I'm not saying it's easy to get, but, you know, people are paid extra to have that CDL. It is an essential thing. We've talked always about, okay, you know, if we need people with CDLs, can we run our own CDL? And we have in the past. We've actually, in the city, run our own CDL course, gotten people qualified, and they've wanted to do that because there's certain equipment that they can do. With regard to storage, there's a couple answers to that. One is that DCM, over the last several weeks, has been in the process of significantly sort of restructuring and cleaning out a lot of the facility that could be used for storage. There's also a space building that's in pieces that's been there for six years in storage, and that building would be sufficient to store five or six of our plow trucks. I mean, it's a huge building. It's just never been erected. And so, and I don't want to complicate the issue by throwing that sort of bizarre fact out.
Well, you know, I'm about to fall out of my chair, right?
So it's been in the building, and it is about the right size to fit into the lot that's down behind the Lewiston Street facility that, right now, is occupied by a bunch of deadlined, no longer usable fire trucks, ambulances, panel trucks, things like that. Those are currently being valued for auction and scrap. They will be gone in the next 60 days, at which point the building will be erected and will have space additionally for, whether it's piles, street sweepers, whatever it is, so they don't get ruined. Because that's a huge thing. We need to protect what we have.
Okay.
Take care of it.
A point of clarification. I apologize. Attorney Aiken, did you say there is a space building?
Space building.
In storage? This council has asked for a space building for equipment for the last six years.
We've been waiting for pricing and erecting and purchasing. How does somebody hide a building?
I can't... This is amazing. We stored it.
So it comes in pieces. So I just recently heard about this. When I was, you know, I've been doing tours of fire stations and DCM and everything else like that, and somebody approached me and let me know about it. It's still, apparently, from what I understand, in boxes or packages, never been opened, and could be erected and used effectively to store vehicles.
And the city doesn't know they paid for a building?
Well, I can't speak to what happened six years ago.
Yeah.
You know, at this point, my interest, and it's certainly frustrating and surprising, but my interest is in moving forward, erecting that building, gaining the storage space that we need, and making sure that that facility is running as well as it possibly can be. And we're certainly moving towards that every day.
Okay, I'm sorry. I'll try not to be stuck on that. I'm just absolutely floored and amazed. So I'm going to ask my last question, so other people can ask questions. It's been stated on numerous occasions, and in the mayor's third paragraph in the budget book in his letter, it states that ARPA funding will be utilized to offset the debt exclusion for DIRFIE high. I don't see anywhere in either of these two pages where any ARPA funding is being dedicated to that, and I never saw in the budget any line item that indicates that ARPA funding has been dedicated.
So essentially, utilizing, pulling all of the capital out of the budgets and utilizing ARPA funding will freed up some, instead of putting the entire debt exclusion into the budget for FY '23, we're putting about half of it in. But in order to do that, we had to pull all the capital out and utilize ARPA funding.
Okay, you're, okay. So ARPA funding is being utilized in which way that assists pulling, gaining money from pulling capital funds?
Because, so instead of putting the entire, almost $5 million of debt exclusion into the budget, or adding the entire amount, we're adding only half of it. So we're utilizing resources of ARPA funding to do the capital expenditures instead of adding the entire, almost $5 million of the debt payment for the DIRFIE.
Okay, so in other words, I could almost say that you used ARPA funding to purchase police cars, so the money that you purchased police cars with could be put towards subsidizing the debt exclusion?
That's essentially what we're doing, yes.
That's what you're saying?
Yeah.
That's how it's being utilized?
So when you, I wasn't here when the capital plan was presented, but essentially, and then we've gone back, and we're having meetings over the next two weeks, asking them to prioritize capital. And the plan is, is to, I mean, obviously, to utilize one-time funding to buy capital items because you don't want to use it for your reoccurring operating expenses.
Right. So still, well, we're not on the budget, but...
So essentially, if we were to pull in the entire, if I were to...
So what dollar amount is being applied as the offset?
So two points, so you can see, it is in the book.
It's 2.2...
Two-five.
It's $2,250,000 that the taxpayers are going to pay. I saw that line item. How much ARPA funding slash pullout capital funding, how many, how much in terms of monies is the offset? Is it 2.4, 2.6, 2.? What's the offset?
Um, I believe...
I believe the original allocation was supposed to be like 4.8, but I could be off on that?
So I know there was a couple, I think when Ed was explaining this to me, he pulled out, I think, around $2 million of capital expenditures. So there's no capital expenditures for any department in any of their budgets currently.
Okay.
With the intent of utilizing ARPA funding to help fund those.
Okay. Well, I'll yield at this point. We'll save this conversation for next week. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor in seat one, Counselor Kadeen.
Thank you, Madam President. Just in terms of the, I guess, the lists of items that we've already committed to, are these being used? I'm just trying to understand the categories. So some of the categories are pretty clear, but are we using lost revenue for these? Like, just for instance, Fall River Police Department, the crime prevention, training, and equipment, $287,000. What category does that fall under?
My guess would be that we would put that under 3.16, which is social determinants of health, community violence prevention interventions. So there are, when you come to, when it comes to police expenditures...
You said 3. what?
3.16. So there's a couple options, well, there's not, there's two options with regard to police. I would argue that 3.16 applies to a lot of police programs with regard to mitigation of violence in communities, especially communities that have been significantly impacted by the effect of COVID, the negative economic impact piece.
But are you going to, part of the documentation, right, so it's going to be similar to a grant, but are you going to have to document that there is a significant uptick in crime from COVID?
Not necessarily. So if you look at the guidance, there is some documentation, depending on the amount of money that's being allocated toward that. And then there are other times where the Treasury has basically put out guidance that there is a presumption that within certain communities that are defined under the rule, there would be the need for non-violence measures or violence mitigation, which can include certain law enforcement expenditures. So you can either go lost revenue, like you said at the beginning, or you can go in the third category.
So then, just in, on the Bristol County, like, so the graffiti removal machine, the pothole and asphalt repair, the street sweeper, what categories do those fall under?
So it should be noted that there is no lost revenue provision in county money.
Right.
So that's something that everyone should be aware of, that with regard to the seven categories that I've put forth here, these are the... um, these are the general ARPA categories, but everyone should be aware that with regard to the money, um, that we're talking about, uh, tonight, lost revenue is not one of those categories. I just want to be very clear about that. Um, so with regard to, um, uh, the, uh, pothole and asphalt repair and street sweepers within. So the guidance under, um, section five infrastructure, which is largely water and broadband, um, as well as, uh, negative economic impacts of COVID, section two, the guidance is that there can be no large-scale road projects, but road projects which are ancillary and connected to water projects are allowed. Um, so the, for instance, the, uh, the pothole and asphalt repair. I mean, that, that's, you know, technically the idea of the hot box and the infrared array, which, which penetrates the pavement, allows year-round, uh, repair of asphalt roads, that sort of thing. Is, could be perfect for a spot waterline repair, lead service removal, anything else like that, because you're patching. Even if your use of that is going to go beyond it, if in fact that can be a significant use, uh, the guidance says that it's allowed. So that was part of the research I did before, because I said, geez, I know that road projects aren't allowed. This, because it's essentially a patch road, um, uh, it facilitates, uh, patch projects, uh, is actually allowed under the, um, uh, under the guidance. They specifically talk about sidewalks, um, and then go on to say that in addition to sidewalks, uh, small road patches are, are an allowable expense, but large-scale, uh, infrastructure roads are not. Uh, street sweepers are a similar thing, especially since they can be utilized, uh, on behalf of the water department. Uh, but there can also be, um, uh, essentially a maintaining of, um, of, you know, sort of city hygiene and, uh, and cleanliness. It's different than a reconstruction or infrastructure project, but rather a maintenance, uh, piece, which is also an allowable use.
Have we gotten any guidance from, uh, Bristol County in terms of, you know, obviously we've got some of the applications with the documentation surrounding it. But I mean, to me, the street sweeper seem, I mean, I, I appreciate the, the attempt. I, I would think that that would get denied under the, uh, the category.
I mean, that's, uh, like I said, I'm not here to try to exercise any control over what the council does with this money.
No, I, I guess when I'm looking at this, I mean, some of these, some of these items, I, I think tend to be a stretch. So what I don't want to do is commit monies that we think are going to be approved, or we get a single audit and then all of a sudden we're having to pay back the federal government for, because this was a concern of the council early on as to whether or not there was going to be audits. And I know there were, at least one counselor who is no longer here, uh, made a statement that somebody said, nobody cares about audits. Well, the, the DLS has, has been very, very clear that, you know, there, we have to follow, uh, you know, the single audit in terms of the, uh, the funding that comes down. So there's going to be some, obviously some audits and, and review by the, the federal government to make sure that we're actually applying for the appropriate categories. Uh, Bristol County has already, I mean, they, they've got an accounting firm that's going to be reviewing all the applications. So it's going to, I think it's going to be more difficult, um, to try to use the $16 million on, on the county side, which, you know, I, I'd support, uh, this council, um, requesting that the administration draft a letter to the Bristol County Commissioners and asking them to open up, uh, the lost revenue category, uh, because I, I think it's the easiest way to, to utilize this money. And, um, and is the least restrictive, as, as you know, and I think gives us more flexibility to be able to, to do more, uh, with the community. And I understand they, they want to use it for, for their projects, but, you know, I, I think even if it's just a percentage to the local communities, right? Whether it's, you know, they want to appropriate 50% of their total, um, and allow that lost revenue, the other 50% of the lost revenue to be dispersed amongst the other communities, and that's fine. But I, I think we need to be a little bit more proactive because, um, trying to target these categories, especially $16 million, which are very, very, uh, strict in my, in my opinion, I, I think we're going to have a difficult time. And just looking at this, I, I mean, I don't, I don't disagree with, that we need street sweepers, we don't, you know, tasers, things like that. I just don't know that we're going to be able to get through the Bristol County. If we can, then God bless us, I, I think it's a, it's a good attempt. But again, I just don't want to be at the last minute where we're trying to spend all this money and then, you know, we're missing, we're missing the boat on trying to either do more water, water projects or sewer projects and getting more, uh, roads repairs or, um, you know, other items, you know, whether it be, you know, health and human service related items, uh, that we can get out there. So I guess I would just in, try to get some type of determination, uh, from Bristol County as to whether or not they think some of these categories would fit the cat, the categories that we would be applying for. And then I think the council can then just come back and say, okay, we've got this, this pool of money. How do we really want to appropriate it? Uh, because if Bristol County is going to say yes to, to a street sweeper, I think that kind of opens up a little bit more leeway in terms of how we be creative, how we can be creative with, uh, spending some of this money. So in, in terms of our portion, we only have 3.8 million left. Is that accurate?
In, in which part are we talking about?
So I was looking at this, this document here, not the, uh, so it just says the City of Florida, ARPA commitments.
That's the original, uh, 35 million that we received. I asked them to provide us with a list of things that they've already used ARPA funding on.
Yeah, so I guess I'm just, I don't know that I'm following it. So we, we've got a, a city allocation of 69 million. We received, um, roughly half of that in June. We've applied 10 million for lost revenue. Then it says lost revenue provision balance, so we have 9 million left. Is that?
Right, so we, we only have, uh, used about 700,000 of the lost revenue, 10 million dollars.
Yep.
With regard to, um, the rest, we have, um, the commitments that we have, uh, leave us with a, a remaining, so of the other 25 million, uh, we have 3.8 million left of that. And then there's another 35 million that should be arriving.
Rising, right.
Any day, or may have already arrived. I, I didn't check as of press time.
So we got about 12 million on the city left of the 35, just rounded up 35 million that we originally received.
Yes.
Is that accurate? And then we've got the 16 million from Bristol County.
Yes.
Okay. Then the only other question I have is, is one stage, so it's the second, that page I was just talking about. Uh, second to last item, one-stage prod tuition assistance, 30,000. What is that?
It's a, um, nonprofit, uh, I can go through all of the ones that have already been committed by the city ARPA committees, if you'd like.
No, some of them are pretty straightforward. That, that one, I'm just curious as to what that is.
This is a nonprofit, uh, that does, uh, performance art, uh, dance. When I say performance art, I mean, you know, uh, vocal stage performance, that sort of thing. It's a, actually a pretty good-sized nonprofit, uh, that serves a, a whole lot of kids. Uh, I don't remember the, the number off the top of my head, uh, but they were looking for, uh, assistance with, uh, basically opening up the program to as many kids at a lower tuition as possible.
So performing arts?
Performing arts.
Okay. With that, I yield.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor in seat five, Counselor Lee.
Thank you. Um, just, uh, wanted to make sure. I, I asked, I think I asked you a while back about, um, the fact that we voted for, to approve the, the first half of the, uh, ARPA funding. And, um, I'm not sure if we ever got anything back, but I was wondering if we vote again for the other half? Or is it already, did we already approve the entire 70 in that vote?
You know, I wasn't here for the vote, so I apologize that I don't know specifically what the terms of the vote were. Uh, if the vote was to approve 34, 34,799,000 dollars in ARPA funding, I would imagine there has to be another vote for the next installment.
Just wanted to make a clarification on that. Um, regarding the, um, the list that you gave us, I, I don't have an argument against what you have, whether or not you want to use it for Bristol County or, uh, the original ARPA funding for body cameras to support. I mean, as long as it's done, it's done, in my opinion. But I, I would like to know, I would like to at least have, um, what Council Vice President asked be answered as far as the clarification as to where it is going to come from. Cause I think it is important and it would tell us where we can then, you know, use the other expenditure when it's, if it's available.
I can just say, just to answer that, um, because, you know, you know, it's hard to know what level of preparation might have gone into this, but I can tell you that I read the 437-page final rule and also the summary, um, and prepared this with that in mind, knowing what the guidance is. That said, we can certainly get confirmation, uh, from some other party that may or may not have read the final rule and, uh, get their opinion on what's, um, uh, what's allowable and what's not. Sure.
I've expressed in the past that I, I feel as though the first 35, uh, that was given, um, or that was approved, hasn't really, um, addressed our sewer and water infrastructure issues. And, um, I haven't seen it as well in this, in this proposal for the 16 million from the Bristol County side as well. Uh, I'm, I am concerned about that. I, I really feel like we're wasting opportunities here to address, uh, some of the, the issues that have been presented by Mr. Furlan in the past and, um, some of the reasons why we have higher wages every year we're voting to, um, increase. And I, and I even know that the bill that has been approved is still not enough because it's every single year we have to see it. Um, but I'm not just focused on that. I think there are legitimate problems when it comes to flooding in certain parts of the city. There's houses that have been built in areas where there's been significant flooding issues. I really do feel as though there needs to be a, a priority set, uh, for that. Um, and this is an opportunity to use those funding. So with that, I yield. Thank you.
If I, if I can just respond to that.
Of course, yeah, I'm just, I'm, the floor's yours.
So this is one of those situations where, um, you know, I'm, I'm bringing some proposals, basically, you know, it's, there's, it's a vacuum, right? Like this is the first time we're having this conversation. I think the administration is looking for the council to make whatever proposals it wants. So, so if you're looking at this saying, geez, we really need to do more with water and sewer, um, you know, you know, the best part is probably to talk to Mr. Furlan and say, hey, what is your capacity? Because between the 8.5 million, uh, that's already been committed, there's, there's, I think, an additional 5 million in, um, lead service reduction that's coming from the state. You know, he's probably out, you know, for a couple of years. The, the money needs to be committed by December 31st of '24 and has to be expended by December 31st of '26. So, um, as long as we're imagining that this stuff needs to happen in the space of, you know, four years, give or take, and we know that, uh, Mr. Furlan's department is actually able to, to do it, um, then I think that, that all the, the proposals and ideas that, that you all have, especially hearing from residents, is, is great. Um, so, so, I mean, I'm, I'm certainly going to bring things, you know, that we've identified as, as priorities. That's certainly not an exhaustive list. I know that there are many other priorities out there and, and I will assist however I can to, to create, you know, whatever needs to go to the, the county to, uh, to do it.
Can I respond? I know I've given the floor. All right. I, I know that, um, Mr. Furlan has been on the floor several times and we've talked about several different ideas and, um, but I mean, we're, we're, as, and I, and I, I, I'm just kind of, I'm not repeating exactly, but I know it's been said that we're legislative only, we're not supposed to do the, the mayor's job and, and that kind of sense. We all, I think we all have ideas as to what we want to do with some of this ARPA funding, but we do, we did have some suggestions to bring down costs or to address infrastructure problems or, or to address, um, flooding problems in the city in the past. And I, I don't know if this is exactly the right time to have that conversation again, but we have had those. And I feel like, I feel as though it's just, there's an opportunity to have that conversation again, um, with the person who runs that department and to have him maybe perhaps come with a proposal with a cost or an estimated cost so that we can know if it's something that can be utilized for ARPA in, in the section five area. So I yield again. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor in seat eight, Counselor Reposo.
Okay. Few thoughts, and I, I want to start with a question, I think going back to Counselor Kadim's point. So Attorney Aiken, in the summary rule, it talks about capital expenditures. It's page 30 as I'm referring to.
Yep.
So what you were saying before is essentially if it's under a certain amount of money, in this case, less than 1 million, no written justification is required to spend that money. Is that accurate?
Well, so, so that's, what you're referring to is specific to capital expenditures.
Correct. Right, page 30.
Yep. Um, so the thing about capital expenditures is that, uh, if you look up at the top, does everyone have the capital, the, uh, the summary printed out? Okay. So recipients may use funds for programs, services and capital expenditures that respond to the public health and negative economic impacts of the pandemic. Any use of funds in this category for capital expenditure must comply with the expenditure requirements in addition to other standards for use of funds. What's interesting about the way they wrote this is they don't actually go into what the capital expenditure requirements are. That is, that is in the final rule. And it's, it's unfortunately significantly more complicated than this chart, which actually makes it pretty simple. It's like under a million is one thing, over a million, it's something else. And then 10 million or more, it's, it's a whole other, uh, situation. When I responded to Counselor Kadim, um, I was actually speaking about non-capital expenditures. Because this is really a, essentially going beyond the rule. So what, what they're talking about here is if you want to go beyond what we've directed you or the guidance that we've given saying you can do A through F, but if you want to go G, all right? Or X or whatever, you need to follow these guidelines. It also has to be documented in this way. What I was actually talking about is, is there are things that require significant oversight just in the, in the normal course and significant justification. There are other things that it's more, you know, this falls into this category, it's mental health, it's, you know, fine. And then, um, it's really not questioned. And I would say the majority of the grants that we've given under ARPA kind of fall into that lesser, uh, documentation. And what we've done at, at the city, um, and, uh, we're going to, um, we're, we're sort of working through the process here, but, uh, Mr. Dean has done a really remarkable job kind of managing a lot of this for the committee. Is he looks at the presentation, he looks at the documentation, uh, and then helps to, um, uh, figure out, okay, what needs to be submitted in order for the funding to happen? And it's not always the entire, uh, documentation. So this is a different thing. It's essentially parallel to what I was talking about. And it sort of speaks to, uh, bigger infrastructure projects that are not contemplated in the seven categories.
Thank you for that clarification. So I just have a few questions. I'll try to throw them at you one by one. As far as the timeline for the expenditure of the Bristol County ARPA funds, what is that?
It's the same as, as, as ARPA, which is commitment by December 31st, '24. Expended, uh, complete by December 31st, '26.
Okay. I, I just want to go through one by one and maybe some of this may be repetitive, so excuse me for it. As far as the body worn cameras, have we come to a conclusion of how many officers will be wearing them? Has that process seen its way to the end?
So we do not have an, so if your question is with regard to a, a labor agreement, is that, or do you actually just want a number?
Just a number. I'm just curious. So if we were to invest this 1.5 million into it, what, what are we seeing as a result for it? How many, how many cameras will be purchased? How many will be out there? Do we have an estimate yet?
We, we do. Um, and I don't actually have the, the full estimate with me, unfortunately. I apologize. I, I realize as I was coming down here, I don't have it. I do have the chief here. I could put him on the spot and see if he knows the number. Uh, he's a very, very capable guy. There we go. See that?
Thank you, Chief.
Um, we should remember that later on in the full council meeting, um, how ready he was with that answer.
So 225 cameras are going to be purchased along with the storage for those cameras?
Yep.
Then as far as how many are going to be used in a, in a day, we don't know that yet.
So the, the idea is that we don't want guys sharing cameras.
Yep.
Right? Um, so, you know, you basically have different shifts. So I'm not saying that in a day, all 225 are going to be used, but, you know, however many guys are on each shift times the number of shifts. You know, I think over the course of a week, you're probably using all the cameras.
Okay. You know, and I've, I've said this to you many of times, the whole situation with the graffiti removal machines.
Yes.
And I, I want to kind of come to this, and we've talked about this before, that graffiti is a, a clearly a problem.
Yes.
Across the city. But I want to kind of advocate in the sense that we can buy the machines, but until we relook at the ordinance that is in the books regarding graffiti, it's going to be problematic. So, I mean, I've been harping about this since the beginning with you, that we need to take care of the graffiti. You look around, it's not something we want to see and needs to be taken care of. However, I think we do need to, and I'm a member of the ordinance committee, um, I would like to advocate that we look at that ordinance to see what can be done to strengthen that for us, as well as, you know, kind of beautify what we're looking at. So I, I support the removal machines, but again, we need to look at the ordinance because having machines sit there and we can't use them because we don't have pull to, to do more can be problematic to me. You talk about the pothole and asphalt repair. If we were to go forward with that, what is the turnaround time roughly to get those up and running?
Couple months.
And we have the people to support it?
We do.
To run them? Okay.
Yeah, there's no special qualifications that would be required. We have two teams right now that are dedicated to that kind of work, and there are some holes, personnel holes, that we're looking at hiring for right now, and we already have some other positions posted. So by the time we got any of this equipment in, I believe we would have a full complement of DCM workers to, to not only staff these, but to do the full mission of DCM.
Okay. On the street sweepers, and, and kind of going back to the graffiti in the same way, frustrating thing for me is watching a street sweeper drive down the middle of Pleasant Street, in the middle, sweeping nothing. To me, it's a little frustrating because, again, it is hard to get to the sides of the roads to take up the trash that's there. I walked some of the foot neighborhood streets two weeks, two weekends ago, picking up trash, and I can't imagine a world where a street sweeper would be able to pick up any of that stuff. Because I know in years past, they used to have postings to allow the street sweepers to do their job. So again, it goes back to this idea that, you know, spending $950,000 is fabulous, except if we don't have a mechanism to ensure it gets done properly, we're going to have them sit in the storage shed that's not going to, they're not going to do anything. So.
So, I mean, there's an infrastructure issue there, without a doubt, right? Because I would imagine that part of the issue that you're identifying is the fact that, you know, we have, you know, we're an older city with narrow streets, a lot of cars that are parked on the streets. It makes it difficult for the street sweepers to, to get into the nooks and crannies, if you will. I know that Mr. Ferland is here. He, he and I have actually talked at length about the street sweepers, and Mr. Dennehy is also here. We've also talked at length about the street sweepers. They might be able to offer some insight into whether the vacuum style street sweeper is a more effective tool for that, or whether there is some other more effective tool, you know, given the issue that you just raised. But I, I almost think that, you know, while you're, you're right, we need to figure out some solution to it, I don't know that, that there's a solution I could think of that's going to get cars off the streets. And, and that's kind of the, the difficult starting point.
Yeah, and, and I think we have to be mindful, obviously, different parts of the city that are more residential versus more commercial, how, and what technology we use to address that issue, and also the timing of it. Obviously, you know, people who are working during the day, the less likely their cars to be there, and more accessible to do the job. But on the flip side of it, there are other parts of the city where we could focus on that cars wouldn't be around because it's, you know, the businesses are closed. It's after 6 o'clock, and, you know, the street sweeper can kind of drive down North or South Main a lot easier because there's no cars on the sides of the street.
Sure.
Point of information, Counselor, there is an entire street sweeping schedule that was done four years ago.
Yeah.
It was started prior to COVID. I believe it ran a pilot program. Signage was done by Laura.
Correct.
There's an entire map, and then COVID came, and they couldn't have more than one person using the sweepers. And then we had broken sweepers, and here we are.
So, so can I ask a follow-up on that, then? Is, is that the plan going forward to follow that pilot program? Has it been relooked at since then?
It was just, so when it was started, and it was done here in ordinance, it went through, I think at that time, four different DCM department heads, because we kept having changeover before it finally got, got implemented. And ran for two seasons, and, and it ran well.
Okay. Yeah, well, that, that's, and that's what I'm kind of alluding to, the idea. I remember some years ago, it running in it from outside looking in, it looked, looked like it was doing a great job, but then I see one driving down the middle of Pleasant Street, and I'm like, well, that ain't working. So that, that's my concern there. Thank you, Madam President. Two more things. As far as the, I asked the last time about what's come out of the ARPA committee, as far as a list or, or an idea of suggestions that have been approached by that committee. I know, I appreciate this list, but I would like to see that list that I asked for last time of ideas, because again, I mean, I can go on Facebook and ask everybody in the world what they want to do with ARPA money, but this work's already being done. So why regurgitate the same process? So is it possible to get that list of not only suggestions, but also applications that have been sent out for maybe us to consider to apply for, through this? Does that make any sense?
So, all right, so on one hand, you're, you are looking for any suggestions that might have been made during the original listening session. Is that correct?
Correct. Yeah.
Okay. If those exist, I'll get them. And I don't know necessarily what form they took when they were recorded, but if they, if they exist, I'll, I'll certainly get them for you. And with regard to applications, so applications that were, that are pending, that were rejected, like, I don't understand.
So maybe, maybe, I, I'll clarify, maybe applications that could be, are ready to be considered, that maybe the city side is not, has not considered or thinking about, that maybe can be brought forward to us in something like this, to say, here's some other suggestions that we think of, that people have brought forward that you may want to consider. Because obviously, this is a small list compared to the amount of money that we have to talk about.
Yeah, I mean, certainly the idea was, and I, I think I'm probably going to fail at this one, but would, was, the idea was getting as many ideas from the council and then helping. But if you'd like me just to, to bring a list of ideas, I can certainly do that, and, and I'll facilitate this however I can. With regard to, to this list, this is, these are just proposals that have been developed enough to actually know what the real cost is. You know, there's a few down the bottom, you know, where they're either, they don't necessarily have a fixed cost because you're not buying a thing. It's more, you know, hey, Forever Paws does amazing work with, you know, with rescue animals. I have a, a red tick hound from Kentucky we got from Forever Paws, and Chief is great. He's a great dog. So they do wonderful work. You know, do we give them, you know, some money? Do we give, you know, youth in action? You know, I think we talked about that at some point in the past, money to do some of the resource work that they're doing. I mean, there are a ton of ideas out there, and I'll, I'll see what I can do to, to get whatever resources we already have of suggestions, so the city council can develop that.
Okay. And, and I'll, I'll just make my last comment. You know, in one of the subcommittees the other day that I was on, discussing the impact on youth, obviously through the pandemic, and at least in my opinion, using ARPA money to support our youth because of the effects of the pandemic is a perfect reason to expend some of that money. So I know we had discussed with Christian McCalusi and, and the group there that was with us, talking about them developing some sort of number that we could possibly go forward with to help support their initiatives, which, again, you know, I know there's a lot of support within the schools and, and all that, but now we're talking about programs outside of the school. So you look at your list here, for example, the 65,000 of city ARPA money spent for the Boys and Girls Club for social emotional programs, which I think is a great start. But I think we need to do more, and there are a lot of organizations that are supporting youth outside of the 8 to 2:30 school day that could really benefit from support from our end. Because again, we're supporting the youth of our city, which essentially will be the future us, hopefully, going around. So, I mean, I'd like to publicly advocate for them. I know I've asked Mr. McCalusi to come with some sort of number that we could possibly work forward with, and I just, I think that's an important thing to note going forward. And that I'll yield. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anything further from the council? Before I recognize Counselors in seat three, Attorney Aiken, I think the best course of action would be, as Counselor Kadim suggested, would be to get approval on the items that you've sent from Bristol County, and then we could talk about them. Are any of these time sensitive?
I mean, everything in the city is sort of time sensitive. It's, I mean, it's, it's always, you know, helpful if we're doing a lot of this stuff sooner rather than later. But if it seems that, that none of it is, is going to happen quickly, because, you know, maybe the county is not able to respond as quickly, or they want to get another opinion, you know, we can, you know, move forward with, with city ARPA money. So I don't think we should, I'm not, we're not, I'm not too, too worried about the timing on, on any of these yet. But I'll just get the opinion from the county and, and get that to the council, so you can have a better sense of what they're willing to allow and what they're, what they're not inclined to, to allow.
Okay. Counselor in seat three, Counselor Vice President.
Yeah, just one more statement, and I meant to say this earlier. You know, sewer and water infrastructure is the only item that can impact this community and save the taxpayers any significant money. It's, in terms of, I mean, you're talking hundreds of millions of dollars that's been, that the taxpayers have been burdened with to complete this project, and we're still so far away from that. You know, we can, we can affect the rates moving forward if we make a significant contribution to future projects. I personally, and people may not agree with me, and that's fine, but for me, it's in the best interest of the city and the taxpayers. When you look at the two, the three pots of money, we're looking at like 85 million dollars and change. And I get, they already gave 8 million dollars.
Water mains.
Yeah, for the water main. But essentially, that money also just circumvented the fact that we couldn't put it into sidewalks. But sidewalks got done because it, it happened to fit into the project. Again, my personal opinion. But with that said, there are new projects. I personally would like to see a concerted effort. I would, I would like to see 15 million dollars dedicated to the water and sewer infrastructure. I'm sure it's not going to happen, but that would be my number, to make a significant impact on this community. And with that, I yield.
Counselor, is that on top of the 8 million already committed, or total?
Yes.
On top of?
Because just on the lead reduction, I believe that in itself is a 20 million dollar project, and that's not, and we're not even talking about other federally mandated projects that we're facing. It's, it's like, the numbers are astronomical. So somewhere, somehow, we have to effect, do something that, that, that's going to help this city. And I, and, you know.
Would it be helpful to the council to have Mr. Ferland down to, to respond as to whether or not we could actually get that?
Yes. Can we waive the rules and have him come down on this?
For this meeting or, or moving forward?
Any, either or.
Is that a motion to waive the rules? Oh, we don't need a motion to waive. Is he here? Is he here?
I would also like him to respond to the street sweeper for the water department, seeing he's here.
Madam President, just.
Counselor?
I guess, point of information, I, I know Mr. Ferland wasn't prepared unless maybe he is prepared, but I agree with Counselor in seat three. I think that's the information we need. Counselor in seat eight has already requested a list of projects that have been put forth, so maybe we get a separate list for Mr. Ferland as to projects that he feels he would be able to do utilizing ARPA money. Now, I, I don't disagree. I support the 15 million dollars, but maybe it's 20 million. Maybe it's 10 million dollars. Whatever the case may be, I, I think, we've, we've said this before as a council, that that truly is the only way to, you know, help the taxpayers, and, and in this case, the ratepayers. So as opposed to, not saying that he would drag this meeting on, but just to kind of move it along, if he could kind of put together a list of projects that have already been submitted, maybe ones that you would have liked to have submitted and didn't submit, so that we can get that and have those conversations in the future meeting.
Agreed. Mr. Ferland?
Yes, so thank you very much, Counselors. So just to touch a little bit, I know the street sweepers was something that was talked about earlier. One thing, that was actually a proposal that was submitted by myself, which will benefit DCM as well as Department of Community Utilities, my department. Street sweepers, most people think that it's go out there and pick up the trash that's on the street. A lot of times, that's what it does, you know, it makes the city look better. But the real essential function of a street sweeper is to be able to pick up any contaminants that are on the ground, dirt, debris, rocks, sand, and stop that from moving into our drainage systems, moving into our sewer system, having to be treated at our wastewater treatment plant, or being brought out into, into the bay, or any other streams, rivers, or ponds, or lakes, essentially contamination. So to limit the amount of contamination, it helps a lot in the fall with picking up leaf litter that's on the street. That's a, that's a prime source of phosphorus and nutrients that runoff. That's one of the major effects of algae blooms in the Southwood Tupper Pond, and nutrients in the Mon Ho Bay. So street sweepers, as we think of them as a, an aesthetic thing, they're also a sewer and stormwater infrastructure benefit. So that's my little.
So you would get a return on investment with that?
Yeah, I feel that, again, that, that would be a great return on investment. It would reduce the pollutants that go into Southwood Tupper Pond, as well as Mon Ho Bay, reduced impacts down at our wastewater treatment plant of sand and other contaminants that runoff and make their way into the combined sewer system.
Madam President, point of, point of clarification.
Counselor?
So you're essentially saying that it reduces costs at the end of it all?
Overall, overall, less that goes into the catch basins, the less sand that goes in there, the less we would have to clean catch basins and stuff like that. The ones that I proposed for my department would assist us in cleaning catch basins and other infrastructure being swales and other stuff that we do need to clean throughout the system to, again, improve the water quality of the runoff that goes off into it.
And you're not able to do that now effectively?
Effectively, we do have large back to trucks, so the smaller street sweeper would be able to, you know, assist the back to trucks on smaller manholes. But it would be a, a more efficient use of our staff's time to be able to use a street sweeper rather than some of the other equipment that we have. So yes.
And in terms of infrastructure, you're confident that you would, you'll be able to come up with a list of projects that can, could be allocated by '24, expended by '26, and would significantly help this community?
Yeah, without a doubt. So currently, we're under, I know everybody hears about the CSO project. Essentially, that's mandated by a federal court order, as well as a consent order with EPA. So we have mandated projects that need to be done within our sewer, stormwater infrastructure. Those projects are eligible underneath ARPA funding. Those projects do have timelines within those orders where they need to be completed, most of them prior to 2025. So, you know, again, a lot of those projects are going to need to be done. And when I look at the capacity of our department, I, I anticipate the, that work that's mandated to be done, you know, as well as another thing that's also talked about down at this council before, is the lead services throughout the whole entire city, and the revised lead and copper rule that's going to be enacted within '24 and '25, that will have a great impact on, you know, removal of lead services and how we've been doing it in the past.
And that, those would be bonds that your department wouldn't, wouldn't have to pay for, and therefore would help to stabilize the rates?
Yes. You know, if we're using this one-time ARPA money to be able to do these projects, we wouldn't have to go out for authorizations for loans, which means that we wouldn't have to pay back those loans. There's other funding that is coming down the pipe as well. Bipartisan infrastructure law has been talked about. There's been some real early briefings on how that money is going to come down and when it's going to come down, but there hasn't been any formulated, calculated way to say what type of savings it would be for, for us, the city and the ratepayers in the long term.
Thank you. I yield.
Thank you. Counselor in seat five, Counselor Lee.
Not going to take long, because I really know that we really need to know what you have. Like, I was, in my head, I was going up to 25. I was yelling 25 million at, at the, at the desk.
I thought people were going to say I was talking too much.
The way, the way I look at it, and you know, I've been here a million times now with this, the way I look at it is there's, there's, public safety and, and water are the main things we need to look at, this, this ARPA funding for, from, from the, from the gate, right from the beginning. I'm not saying that the other entities don't matter at all, but when we look at what Fall River specifically needs and the problems that we've had, when you look at the CSO project, you look at many other things, we just, we just have a golden opportunity, I believe, to, to try to invest in something that can make this, most of this go away, or some of it go away, or at least mitigate some of this that's coming our way when it comes to water and sewer. So I, I just, I don't know why, I have no idea why, but there just seemed to be a reluctance to invest in that from this current administration, and I'm not sure why, and maybe it's just in my head, but it just feels like that. So I'm hoping that we take advantage of this opportunity. So I'm looking forward to seeing your list, and I yield on that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anything further? Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Ms. Solomon. Motion with adjutant finance made by Counselor Kamara, seconded by Counselor Repouzo. All those in favor?
Aye.
Still voted. We have finances adjutant. Two-minute recess. Fall River City Council now come to order, Madam Clerk.
Counselors Kadim?
Here.
Kamara?
Here.
Dion?
Here.
Kilby?
Here.
Lee?
Here.
Pelletier?
Yeah.
Pereira?
Repouzo?
Yep.
And President La Libre de Lebo.
Here. Would everybody in the chamber please rise for a moment of silent prayer? And if we would keep the family of Rebecca and Jim Cusack and Ken Pacheco in your purse? Remain standing for a salute to the flag.
Let the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting, or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present, and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. Madam Clerk?
The first item before you is the mayor's request for
The first item before you is the mayor's request for the appointment and contract of Paul Goffin as the city's.
Motion to confirm?
Second.
Motion to confirm made by Counselor Kadeem, seconded by Counselor Kilby. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Madam Clerk, do you need roll call?
No, ma'am.
Can I just get a point of information? Do we need a motion to adopt the contract as well as?
Is it a separate motion, Madam Clerk? Two votes?
The order will approve the appointment and the contract.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
Congratulations.
I didn't want Chief Goffin walking away without a paycheck.
No.
Appreciate that.
No problem.
Congratulations, Chief. Madam Clerk?
Item number two is the mayor's request for the confirmation of Ryan Lyons as the chairperson of the Board of Election Commissioners.
Motion to adopt the appointment?
Second.
Motion to adopt made by Counsel Kilby, seconded by Counsel Pelletier. Any discussion? Counselor in seat three, Counsel Vice President Dion?
Yeah, I just want to say that I did receive some phone calls. However, I went through city ordinance, I went through the charter, I went through mass general law, and there is nothing that precludes Mr. Lyons from having this appointment, nothing that precludes him from being the, at this point, temporary elections commissioner. The only requirement according to mass general law would be, let's see, as designated by the Board of Registrazes or Board of Election Commissioners, shall attend an annual training conducted by the Office of the State Secretary and offer at no cost the municipality the vigil on the applicable state and federal election laws and regulations. So as long as he were to do that training, nothing precludes him from being appointed. With that, I yield.
Thank you. I just want to make mention of the, the letter that we received. Mr. Lyons has been in the elections office since 2019, and he has not worked on any campaigns since just before taking that office. I mean, Fall River is a very political city. I think you'd be hard pressed to find people that haven't supported one candidate or another over time, but that shouldn't preclude anybody from doing their job and doing it to the best of their ability. Have a motion to confirm. Is anything further from the council?
Motion made.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted. Congratulations.
No kissing the girls. You gonna kiss me?
Item number three A is the mayor's request for the reappointment of John Brandt to the Conservation Commission.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion approved made by Counsel Vice President Dion, seconded by Counsel Reposo. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted.
Item three B is the mayor's request for the reappointment of the James Cusick to the Conservation Commission.
Second.
Motion approved made by Counsel Kilby, seconded by Counsel Reposo. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted.
Item four is a traffic commission's request to amend traffic ordinance.
Motion to refer to ordinance?
Motion to refer to the Committee on Ordinance and Legislation made by Counsel Kilby, seconded by Counsel Pelletier. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
So voted.
Committee on Ordinances and Legislation, at a meeting held on May seventeenth, voted unanimously to recommend that the accompanying proposed ordinance, accompanied by an emergency preamble, be passed through first reading, second reading, passed to be enrolled, and passed to be ordained with Counselor Lee absent and not voting. This relates to handicapped parking.
Motion so made.
Motion to adopt from your G preamble?
Second.
Motion made by Counsel Reposo, seconded by Counsel Kilby. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted.
Need a vote on the emergency preamble?
Motion to adopt. Second.
Motion to adopt an emergency preamble made by Counsel Kadeem, seconded by Counsel Reposo. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted.
We need a roll call on this motion to adopt. Counselors Kadeem?
Yes.
Kamara?
Yes.
Dion?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Pelletier?
Yes.
Pereira? Reposo?
Yes.
And President La Libre de Lebo?
Yes.
And to pass the ordinance through all readings.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel Kadeem, seconded by Counsel Vice President Dion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted. Committee on Human Services, Housing, Youth and Elder Affairs, at a meeting held on May seventeenth, voted unanimously to recommend that the accompanying proposed resolution be granted leave to withdraw. This related to the use of a platform by that committee to announce Youth Violence Prevention Week to be held April twenty-fifth through the twenty-ninth.
Motion made.
I'll make the motion, grant leave to withdraw.
Motion made by Counsel Vice President Dion, seconded by Counsel Reposo. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted.
Have a proposed ordinance for passage through second reading and enrollment as amended, and there are a number of miscellaneous traffic ordinances.
Motion to adopt as amended. Second.
Motion to pass through second reading and enrollment as amended made by Counsel Kilby, seconded by Counsel Reposo. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted.
We have the, for passage through second reading and enrollment, the water rates.
So moved.
Second.
Motion to pass through second reading and enrollment made by Counsel Kadeem, seconded by Counsel Kilby. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Counselor in seat three opposes.
For passage through second reading and enrollment, we have the sewer rates.
So moved.
Second.
Motion to pass through second reading and enrollment made by Counsel Kadeem, seconded by Counsel Reposo. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Counselor in seats three and five opposed.
Item ten is the ordinance for passage through second reading and enrollment, and this is the residential compost recycling program.
Motion so made.
Motion to pass through second reading and enrollment made by Counsel Kadeem.
Second.
Seconded by Counsel Kilby. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted.
And item number eleven for passage through second reading and enrollment is the historical preservation ordinance.
Motion so made.
Motion to pass through second reading and enrollment made by Counsel Reposo.
Second.
Seconded by Counsel Vice President Dion. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted.
Whereas many residents of the city of Fall River have served in the military and made the ultimate sacrifice in defending our country, and whereas Memorial Day will be observed on May thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two, and whereas a flag has been procured that was flown over the United States Capitol, now therefore be it resolved that the Director of Cemeteries be requested to fly this flag at Oak Grove Cemetery in honor of those men and women. Motion to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt made by Counsel Vice President Dion, seconded by Counsel Kilby. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted. That flag raising ceremony is at ten a.m. on Friday of Memorial Day weekend, and there is a whole flyer of events all weekend long.
Item number thirteen is a citation for Judy Collins.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt made by Counsel Kadeem, seconded by Counsel Reposo. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted.
Fourteen is a citation for Christopher Blanchett.
Second.
Motion to adopt made by Counsel Kamara, seconded by Counsel Reposo. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted.
Fifteen is an order scheduling a hearing for mass electric for an underground conduit.
Motion to adopt.
Motion made by Counsel Kadeem, seconded by Counsel Kilby. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted.
Sixteen is the police chief's report.
Motion to adopt. Second.
Motion to adopt made by Counsel Kadeem, seconded by Counsel Reposo. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted.
Seventeen is an application for an auto repair shop license renewal. Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt made by Counsel Vice President Dion, seconded by Counsel Reposo. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted.
Eighteen is the transfer of an auto repair shop license located at four-ten Second Street.
Motion to adopt. Second.
Motion to adopt made by Counsel Kadeem, seconded by Counsel Reposo. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted.
Nineteen is the application for the transfer of an auto body shop license located at four-ten Second Street.
Motion to adopt. Second.
Motion to adopt made by Counsel Reposo, seconded by Counsel Pelletier. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted.
Item twenty, or claims.
Second.
Motion to refer to corporation counsel made by Counsel Kamara, seconded by Counsel Reposo. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted.
Twenty-one are applications for drain layer licenses. Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion approved made by Counsel Vice President Dion, seconded by Counsel Reposo. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted.
Item twenty-two is a request for a structure honor over a public weigh on behalf of Kevin Santos.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion approved made by Counsel Kadeem, seconded by Counsel Reposo. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted.
Item number twenty-three are planning board minutes.
Motion to accept and place on file.
Motion to accept and place on file made by Counsel Vice President Dion, seconded by Counsel Kadeem. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted.
Twenty-four are minutes of the city council public hearing held on April twenty-sixth.
Motion so made.
Motion to approve.
Motion approved made by Counsel Reposo, seconded by Counsel Vice President Dion. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted.
We have minutes of the regular meeting of the city council held on April twenty-sixth.
Motion so made. Second.
Motion approved made by Counsel Reposo, seconded by Counsel Kadeem. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted.
Motion to take items twenty-six, twenty-eight together.
Second.
Motion to take items twenty-six through twenty-eight together after reading made by Counsel Kadeem, seconded by Counsel Reposo. All those in favor?
Aye. Motion to approve. A motion to accept and place on file.
Second.
Madam Clerk, would you read twenty-six, twenty-seven, and twenty-eight?
Sure. Twenty-six through twenty-eight are notices of casualty and loss. Those locations were thirty-eight sixty-five North Main Street, seventy-nine Woodlawn Street, and one twenty-three Knightsway.
Motion to accept and place on file made by Counsel Kadeem, seconded by Counsel Vice President Dion. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted. Need a brief recess to sign ordinances, Madam Clerk?
Do you want to do that before we do the resolution?
Either way.
The resolution that was filed earlier this evening, whereas information has been brought forward to the council's attention, that completion of the Durfee High School athletic fields is in question, and whereas there is an educational and civic importance for the projects to be completed, now therefore be it resolved that this issue be discussed with the school department during the council's deliberation of the fiscal two thousand twenty-three proposed budget, and be it further resolved that the school department be prepared to discuss the status of the indirect cost agreements as well as the feasibility of establishing a stabilization account for the Durfee Fields.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt made by Counsel Kilby, seconded by Counsel Vice President Dion. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
So voted. Now you need a recess, Madam Clerk. We'll take a brief recess. Counselors back in session.
First item is the proposed ordinance for final reading miscellaneous traffic.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt made by Counsel Kilby, seconded by Counsel Reposo. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted.
The next is the, are the water rates for passage to be ordained.
So moved. Second.
Motion to pass through ordination made by Counsel Kadeem, seconded by Counsel Reposo. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Opposed.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Seats three and five opposed.
We have the sewer rates for passage to be ordained.
So moved. Second.
Motion to pass through ordination, ordination made by Counsel Kadeem, seconded by Counsel Reposo. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Counselors in seat three and five opposed.
We have the residential compost recycling program ordinance for passage to be ordained.
Motion to pass through ordination.
Second.
Motion to pass through ordination, ordination made by Counsel Kadeem, seconded by Counsel Pelletier. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I give a definition on it.
What? I didn't hear you. I can't say that word. Any opposed? So voted.
And lastly, we have the proposed ordinance relating to historical preservation for passage to be ordained.
Motion so made. Second.
Motion made by Counsel Reposo, seconded by Counsel Kadeem. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? So voted.
Motion to adjourn. No.
I'm sorry. Counselor in seat one, Counsel Kadeem?
Thank you. Quickly, before we adjourn, I'd just like to make a motion that we send a letter to the governor's office in Mastod with regards to invitations and express our disappointment. In terms of every, every time we talk about, you know, the state delegation, the local delegation, we always talk about a partnership, and yet there was the lighting of the Bragger Bridge and none of the councils received an invitation to the press conference, the lighting ceremony, whatever you may want to call it. Every year or every two years when we have the inauguration, we invite the governor, we invite the federal delegation, we invite our, our local delegation, you know, we, we have state of the city, the local delegations invited. I just think it's a, it's a slap in the face when we've been having conversations, especially from economic development, talking about the lighting of the, of the bridge, and there was zero communication to the city council, which is the legislative body for the city to be invited as part of the ceremony. I just think it's, it's an unfortunate situation. If the local delegation wasn't invited, they'd be upset, so I would, I would hope that they would be, you know, articulating their concern and frustration with the fact that the city council was not invited. I'm sure that's not going to be the case, so I think we need to take it upon ourselves and share that with the, you know, the governor's office and, and Mast DOT in terms of the, the slight that we felt with the lack of invitation to such an important, important project. And quite frankly, I didn't even know about the project going on. I don't know why it was such a secret.
Secret.
That we were lighting a bridge. I don't, I don't know why that is such a top-secret initiative. I think it's something that should have been discussed. I wasn't aware, found out about it on social media, and I, I think it's just an unfortunate situation from my standpoint. So with that, I'll, I'll make a motion whether or not it gets supported.
Second.
Motion made to send a communication to, could you list that again, Counselor?
The governor's office. So to the governor. I would include the lieutenant governor and then Mast DOT.
Mast DOT. Do you have that, Madam Clerk?
Yes.
Motion made by Counsel Kadeem, seconded by Counsel Vice President Dion. Any further discussion? Counselor in seat six, Counsel Pelletier.
Another issue.
A different issue. Any discussion on this letter? Seeing none, I, I do want to say, Counselor, as you know, I, I did send an email to our state representative, Viola, who was working on this with the lieutenant governor for several years. I also did not know it had, had come to be. And I know you sent an email as well the night of the lighting, but there was one counselor that was in attendance that, that didn't know about it.
Did know about it?
Yep.
Yes, Counsel Pereira was, was at the lighting.
11% of the councils were there.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted. Madam Clerk, do you have that?
Yes.
Counselor in seat six.
Thank you. I thought we all agreed that we're going to do the budget hearings from 6 to 9, and you snuck in a 10 there for some reason. Or I'll tell nobody.
So Counselor, last year was in.
Somebody ratted you out.
It was going to be 5:30 to 9:15, and then there was some folks that were going to have trouble getting here at 5:30, and I don't want counselors to feel like they were coming to each meeting late, so we did bump it to 10, but we are taking a dinner break at 8 o'clock, and I'll be providing food. Does that make it better?
Do we have a vote on that?
A vote on.
I'd rather have it 5:30 to 9:00.
Not every counselor could be here at 5:30.
Although, just to elaborate, a dinner break, I don't think we need to be taking a dinner break.
15 minutes.
Six to nine.